All right, good evening, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Monday, June 26, 2023. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page of our website for listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hoffman, if you'd read our community prayers?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness, and we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers to all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda this evening, as always, is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to our first agenda item, which is applications for appointment to the Cultural Council for a two-year term through June 30, 2025. We have two applicants, Kevin Farrell and Marcia Penty, and there are several openings. Correct, Mr. Fen- Mr. Fennessy?
Yes, that's correct. Plenty of openings.
All right, neither Mr. Farrell or Ms. Penty are able to join us this evening, but I believe you all have your applications in your packet. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we appoint Kevin Farrell to the Cultural Council.
All right, we have a motion and a second on Mr. Farrell. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed. It is unanimous. Is there another motion?
I move that we appoint Marcia Penty to the Cultural Council.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed. It is unanimous. Thank you. All right, next is a discussion, a possible vote to approve the Plymouth County Retirement Association 5% local cost of living adjustment option. Well, you'll remember, we had this on a previous agenda. There were multiple questions from the board, and we are very pleased to have Plymouth County Treasurer Tom O'Brien here this evening. We really appreciate it. There are a lot of questions about this, and if you'd like to come up and-
Well, I'm also hoping Charles can come up with me, and we'll do it twice and maybe save some time.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, since I was an employee, took early in the time, I'm going to accuse myself.
Well, thank you. Welcome, gentlemen. If you could just introduce yourselves so the folks at home-
Absolutely, I'll start, and then I'll turn it right over to you, Charles. For those that I haven't had the pleasure of meeting him, Tom O'Brien, I'm the Plymouth County Treasurer. But more importantly, every time I come back to Carver, I like to revisit my heyday as a representative, state representative for the town of Carver from 1996 to 2002, when they redistricted Carver out of my district. But I thoroughly enjoyed serving and representing the people in the town of Carver. And I also have to let the board know that your Administrator, Robert Fennessy, called me regularly about this topic. I was unavailable, so I know I was hoping I could have made your last selectmen's meeting, but I was unable to do so, so thrilled that we could be here. But I'm even more excited because one of your residents, one of our retirees, Charles Armanetti, is here as well and has a few thoughts that he's going to share with you. I'll add a few, and then we'll answer all the questions that you folks have.
Okay. Can I just quickly ask you before we start? I know there was a threshold, was it 70% of the towns in the Plymouth County retirement system? So has that threshold been reached yet?
We expect it will be shortly. We have 13 for 13, 14 for 14, if you count Wareham, who took a vote in the affirmative a few weeks ago and a confirmed vote later today. So we expect that. We just came from Plimpton, where they voted unanimously to support it, so I can tell you, every board that has taken it up has voted unanimously to support it.
Okay, but it's not at 70% yet?
It will be probably by the end of this evening, we hope and expect.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Board. My name is Charles Armanetti, I live at 7 Leonard Street.
Phil, if you'll pull that over closer.
Yeah, I'll read it over to you. I live at 7 Leonard Street and have been here since 1990. And I have worked for Middleborough for 36 years, plus or minus, I did a little state work also, but 36 years in the retirement system, say. And I retired in '09. And I am here representing not only the Middleborough Retirees Insurance Group, which I am the chairman of, but also to assist the treasurer, he's actually the Plymouth County Retirement Board, for the presentation of this COLA increase. This COLA increase was basically voted in in November last year by the legislature, after it went to the governor and he had to make an amendment on it to modify it for the towns, so that the towns and county could actually vote on this for their local retirees. What you're voting on tonight, if you choose to do so, is a vote for your police fire, your DPW, and your workers in the school that are not teachers to get, to catch up, basically, with the 5% COLA that the other state workers and the teachers already have. They got that back in November. So in other words, what happens normally is we get a 3% COLA on a $16,000 base, which ends up being $480. Yeah, $480. And we get that every year, as long as the cost of living, the CPI, goes up at least 3%. So the first 3%, we get a $16,000 base raise on that, amounts to $480. Now, that's only if your retirement is $16,000. And there are several retirees, many retirees, not a lot, but I'd say quite a few, that don't actually get the $16,000, so they get a prorated amount. So because the CPI last year was 5.5%, and this year was 8.7%, the Social Security got a 14.6% increase in the last two years on their total retirement, not just on a $16,000 base, which the average Social Security person is around $18,000 to $20,000. So that works out to about a 12% or 14% raise that we'd have to get to be compatible, because most of us don't get Social Security. And the ones that do are limited by the windfall elimination provision, which cuts it down to one-third of what you would get if you had just worked outside. So anyway, the intent of the selectmen was to give some relief to the retirees that don't get Social Security. And they increased our COLA this year, which when I say this year, I mean this fiscal year, which ends in July, by 2%. So that 2% increase totals $320, and if you vote for it tonight, you'll be giving that to your police fire and, you know, the ones I spoke of. And that'll be retroactive to last year, and it'll be a one-time $320 increase. So in other words, there won't be another $320 next year and the year after. Of course, it will lift their retirement by the $320 from now on, but that's what you actually have there. And I gave you numbers, I think you should have them in your packet.
We do.
Yes, and if you flip over to the page that I, you can read all of them, but if you flip over to the page that I gave you, which should be, there should be a page like this on the other side, you can see very quickly Carver's line. And in Carver's line, what you're voting on tonight is an increase of $88, I'm sorry, $70,000. And the reason why you're voting on that much money is because what the actuary did for us at Plymouth County is they figured how many retirees you have, which totaled about 130, 2530 that are actually counted. The ones, the reason why we don't count all your retirees is because the ones that retired after July 1, 2021, do not get a COLA. They have to be fully retired a year before the COLA is input. So these are only the people that retired prior to 2021. So that reduces your amount a little bit. And the other thing that reduces your amount a little bit is, like I said, some of them don't make $16,000. So we figured around 125 to 130 retirees, I think they got the actual figure, I didn't get the actual number, but it was close to that. And we took the total amount of that 2% increase, which was five times $70,000, and we divided it by five. And the reason why we did that is because your arrears on your retirement account will be scheduled to be paid off by 2029. So if we coincided that from 2025 to fiscal year 2029, five years, then both of these, both the COLA and the full retirement for all the past retirees, will be paid off. And at that point, I think we will be down to about 70% reduction in your total payment every year after '29, between 70 and 80%. Depending, of course, how investments go for Plymouth County in the next few years, because all that goes toward reducing your fee also. And also how many people we hire, that matters, because they pay the retirement for us. So basically, you're looking at around between 70, I'd say between $65,000 and $75,000 a year for five years to pay this off, this piece off. This piece will pay off everyone that's going to get it for the rest of their lives. The only thing that will change that is, of course, if some die younger, you'll get money back, and if some live longer, you'll have to pay a little bit more in it to adjust for that. But that's basically it. Just the reason why you didn't receive it until this last, the end of the month, which is kind of tough to do for you, is that when we had a vote on this in April, the vote was unanimous down at Plymouth County. And then they had a medical emergency and did not get, they didn't have a director available to initiate the action out. And what had to happen at that point, they had to go to the county commissioners to vote. And that had to happen, then it had to come to all you to vote, and we had to get you up to speed on it. So as soon as the new, as soon as the new director came in to Plymouth County, he went forward with it, got the county commissioners to vote it, they voted unanimously also. And then we got the letter out to you on the 31st. And at that time, I met the new director and started going around to the treasurers, and most of the town administrators, or at least, you know, someone in the town, your administrative assistant, if I couldn't get the administrators, and gave them a package and explained to them what we were up against and, you know, what we'd like to have done. So that's all I have at this point. The only other thing I had was the average pension for Plymouth County retirees is $27,000, $26,500, I believe it is. So that might be an important thing for you to think of. And this will be paid retroactive to the people, to the retirees. However, you will not see any kind of impact on your budget this year, and you'll first visit this in November or December, when you start looking at the FYE 25 figures. That's when you'll have to budget, so.
Okay, unless you have quick questions for me, I'd like to have Tom O'Brien, Treasurer, speak.
Thank you, Charles, and you've covered a lot of territory there. So what I'm going to try and do is condense a little bit of it, maybe do it a little chronologically, hit some highlights, and then be here to answer questions. I appreciate Charles mentioning the fact that the Plymouth County Retirement Board was the first group that was supposed to take this up, and as he mentioned, I serve as the chairman and treasurer for that organization, as well as for the county. The legislature passed this in November, governor signed it in December, it came to us in January. At the meeting where we were going to take this up, our executive director had a health issue. In fact, we had to cancel the meeting on the spot, the ambulance was called, and he was unable to return. So we had to spend a meeting or two getting a new executive director on board so that we could take it up. So the retirement board wasn't able to take this up until April. I then, they passed it unanimously, I brought it to the county commissioners, who took it up in May, they passed it unanimously, which is why it came what appears to be last minute, toward the end of May, beginning of June. And we certainly wish that that timing could have been different, but can't control certain things, and it was just the way that that situation developed. We sent the information out to our communities and are asking each of the communities that are members of the Plymouth County Retirement Association to pass this. For many of the points that Charles made, and I'm going to highlight a few of them. First of all, these are folks that haven't had significant increases for a long period of time, particularly compared to those that have already received some increases. As Charles has mentioned, the teachers and state employees got this bump up in November, and if you're a retiree and living on Social Security, you've seen increases of 7%, 9% over the last two years, which adds cumulatively. Our municipal retirees have not had that benefit. As he mentioned, many of them are not eligible for Social Security, and even if they are, they face the windfall elimination provision, WEP, and government pension offset, GPO. And so they are frequently not able to derive the benefits of these type of COLA increases. And we all know what's happened to inflation over the last two or three years. So you're talking about people that have not seen increases and that are really senior and probably toward the lower end of the earnings spectrum, living on fixed income. As Charles mentioned, the average pension in Plymouth County is $27,000 a year. I just ask you to think about that. Imagine trying to live on $27,000 a year, and that's our average pension. So that means there are a number of folks below that trying to survive. And so we hear constantly from them about the challenges they face, living paycheck to paycheck, and in need of some kind of relief. So they went to the legislature and said, hey, we haven't seen these increases, the legislature saw fit to do this, this is the rubric that they've set up for us to offer this relief. And it'll amount to a little between $24,000 or $25,000 a month for some of these folks, not a lot of money. So there's a clear need, these are clearly the people we want to help. I know that all of us got involved in public service to help those in need, and I really feel as though these are the people that we're talking about, and this is our chance to really help them out. So then the second question becomes, well, obviously, there's a cost to doing that, and I know you folks had some questions about that, and they're very valid and important questions, and Charles hit all the key salient points. It's important to note a few things. One, Plymouth County Retirement Association's investment performance has been pretty spectacular, and I don't say that just because I'm the chairman and the treasurer and a representative of the group. I can say that based on empiric evidence that we have to point that out. I'm pleased to report to you that over a three-year and a five-year period, the Plymouth County Retirement Association's investment performance has put us in the top 1% of all public pension systems in the country. So clearly, we've had some success managing our investment portfolio, we continue to do that, and so we expect that we will continue to meet our goals and our objectives, hit our bogey, so to speak, and return some good performance. As a result of that, we will be fully funded, meaning that all of our liability for all of our retirees that are members of our system will be set aside in our fund and covered in 2029. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts is not expected to be fully funded until 2034, most systems are expected to be funded between 2035 and 2040. So what's the benefit of being fully funded by 2029? Well, once we hit the fully funded mark, your assessment goes down precipitously. It drops significantly to what we call normal cost. So you will see a reduction in your retirement assessment as a member of the Plymouth County Retirement Association of between 75 and 80% once we are fully funded. And so we have worked very hard, in conjunction with our towns, to stay on that schedule. We sometimes get requests that we could extend the schedule, and we think about that, we give it serious consideration. But that would be like your bank coming to you with your mortgage and saying, listen, we know you want to reduce your monthly payment, you don't want to be paying X per month. So we're going to allow you to extend your mortgage an extra five years. And the bank does that because, of course, they'll collect more interest over that period of time. So unfortunately, if we extend the funding schedule out, you'll be paying more interest. And so we see a real value in trying to hold that funding schedule. However, what we can say is if this increase, or any other increase, or there's a catastrophe in the investment world or in the marketplace, that the Retirement Association has those arrows in our quiver to extend the funding schedule out and provide relief if we need to. Now, remember, that relief would only be a reduction in what you pay annually, and it would add some interest costs in the long term, but we know the challenges you folks are facing, so that is an option that we have in front of us. It's also important to note that this will not impact your FY24 budget at all. You've already done your budget, no impact at all. The impact takes place first in FY25. And as Charles mentioned, it's approximately, we do our best with our actuarial assumptions, about $70,000 a year for five years. Why five years? FY25, '26, '27, '28, and the magic '29. If we were to extend our funding schedule out, then it would go out for as long as that funding schedule were extended. We're going to try very hard not to do that. We feel that we need to be fiscal stewards of our taxpayer resources and return good investment performance, so we're really trying to stick to that schedule. It was fascinating to me, our Retirement Association, our advisory board is made up of the treasurers of our member units, so they serve as our advisory board. We have twice annual meetings with our treasurers, and as we've talked about this funding schedule, I've noticed a real shift. Early on, the treasurers, particularly during '07 and '08, remember that crisis, they were asking us to consider extending that funding schedule out. By the way, we did, at one point, we extended it out from 2028 to 2030, but we've been able to, by investment performance, bring it back to 2029. We had a meeting in January, we asked the same question about the funding schedule, and to a person, every single one of our treasurers said, no, stay the course at 2029, we don't want to pay more interest costs, we don't want to extend the mortgage out, we really want to try and get this paid. It was the first time in my tenure, and I've been here now for 17 years, that I saw that shift in that dynamic. And I think it's because we're close. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel. 2029 is not that far away. When we started this back in the 80s, that was a long time. When we were dealing with the financial crisis in '07, extending it out didn't seem to be a bad idea. But where we are today, we think we need to keep that tight. So we know it's a challenge, and we appreciate the challenge, but we think it's a challenge our elected officials and our board is up to. These are the folks that need this relief more than others, and we certainly have been pleased to see each town, as we go out, unanimously support this, and we just ask that Carver join its voices with the others and vote to approve this COLA.
Okay, thank you. I know previously there were a number of questions from the board. Mr. Ryan, why don't we start with you?
Just to get up to speed on this, so in fiscal '25, with a normal 3% increase, Carver's assessed $3,197,34. Can you fill me in on how that number came to be, why? I would think if you're under a retirement, you know, employees contribute to the retirement, I think, and then now the towns are doing that. How's that calculated? How are we getting $3.19 million?
Yes, and I don't have that cheat sheet in front of me, but quite simply, for years, the retirement system was what you would call pay-as-you-go, and the towns were only contributing the cost of their retirees for that year. In the 80s, the federal government and state government said, you can't do that any longer. You need to pay the cost of all of your retirees, and you need to extrapolate out how much it's going to cost when they retire. So all of a sudden, all of these systems had significant liability. Think of your OPEP liability, that was pension liability back in the 80s. And so they said to every system, and there are 101 in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you have until 2028 to be fully funded. And so that liability was pretty significant. As I mentioned, in '07, and I found this fascinating, because I just left the legislature, in '07, the state passed a bill saying you could extend the funding schedule to 2030. The day the legislature passed that, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts extended their funding schedule to 2030. We didn't. The next year, 2008, they extended it to 2040. The day the legislature passed that, the state voted to extend their funding schedule to 2040. We didn't. We did extend our funding schedule from 2024 to 2030, and we've since brought it back to 2029. I'm getting to your question, though.
Okay.
It is that liability of all those people that went before that we're paying for today. And it's a significant liability, and we have been whittling it away over the last 25 years.
Previous liability.
Exactly. It's a significant previous liability. Now, I do want to get this little tidbit out, because it's important. If you are a municipal employee hired after April 1, 1996, you are paying your full freight and more. You are contributing what's called 9 plus 2 to retirement. That's actually more than actuarially you need to contribute to cover the cost of your retirement. So anybody out there who thinks municipal employees get too much in terms of a pension needs to know if they were hired after that date, they're covering their freight. Plus, and the reason for the plus is to cover all those people that went before. So think about this, there were retirees, there were employees in the 60s and 70s that weren't paying anything until their retirement, it was covered by their employers. Once they realized that the employees needed to contribute, they started to contribute first at 5%, then at 7%, then at 8%, then 8 plus 2, and now at the magic 9 plus 2. And the 9 is on the first $30,000, and the 2 is on anything over $30,000. So we're catching up for the sins of the past.
I see.
Now, I'm going to tell you a little secret, and I hope you have our evaluation report. Every two years, we are required to do a valuation report as to what to charge our member units. And it's based on decisions made in each unit. Quite candidly, towns that are hiring more people at higher salaries have a greater increase in their retirement cost. However, one thing we did, and we started this trend, and I think most of the systems have adopted it, if you pay your full assessment on July 1, we give you a discount. So because you're required to pay July 1 and November 1, if you pay the full freight on July 1, we give you, I think it amounts to a 1.7% discount. And so we found, not surprisingly, many of our members like that little bit of a discount and do whatever they can to harness their resources to effectuate that savings. So, you know, we do our best to realize, we know it's a cost. Here's the other bit of good news, Dan, if we can get to 2029, it goes away.
Right.
We've paid the sins of the past. We've covered that cost. And I, for one, am very excited about that. I feel like I've got a lot of tenure in trying to get to that goal, that objective. Now, I will also offer this thought, Plymouth County itself, with a $10 million budget, recognized the value of pre-contributing to pensions. So over the last 10 years, because I would tell you they have a fantastic treasurer at Plymouth County, they have been pre-contributing to their retirement to the tune of about $10 million. Think about that. On a $10 million budget, over the last five years, we've contributed $10 million extra dollars to our pension system. So that's driven down our cost. Carver has made, as far as I know, at least one pre-contribution, which helps drive that cost down as well.
Okay. The answer, you all said?
I have more, but I'll let people-
Go ahead, go ahead. Just keep going.
I'm asking the questions. Okay, so I understand the base, we're paying for, it wasn't funded enough to cover all the retirees.
Wasn't funded to cover any of the retirees.
Right, so now we're playing that catch-up. And then, two things, I guess, so the one-time cost is about $70,000 to us in fiscal '25, that's going to bring it up to $3,268,000, of which now we'll pay 3% of that going up to fiscal year '29. So that'll impact the base, but then we still pay another 3% automatically on top of that each year from the $3,268,000. That's correct, right?
5%?
Well, there's an automatic 3% built in every year, so Carver will be assessed 3% plus that every single year.
So, but that's factored in.
Yes.
So the number we gave you factors that in.
Okay.
So you won't see, so the total number in the sheet that you have, we expect, the one-time difference for this is $333,829, which averages out to be about $70,343 a year over five years, but don't forget the interest. That's why if you multiply 70, 3, 4, 3 times 5, you don't quite get 3, 3, 3, 8, 2, 9.
Okay.
But that is all factored into that number.
Ah, okay. And then after, in fiscal '29, it drops by, you said we'll probably lose 75 to 80% off of that number. What's the purpose of continuing to fund it if it's self-funded in the sense that people are, you know, contributing out of their pay?
I would love to give you a gold star for asking that question, because not enough people do, because you still have the normal cost of your retirees that are, your employees that are still there. So you're going back to the days of paying the cost of that employee for that year.
Okay.
So you're covering that cost, so we don't continue to see the liability grow.
Okay.
Now, I will say this, once we're 100% funded, what's the guarantee we stay at 100% funded? Right, it will depend on the marketplace.
Right.
If I'm still the treasurer at that point in time, and who knows, I would recommend that you want to get to about 100, 507%. Give yourself a little bit of cushion, take the vast majority of that and put it into more conservative investments to protect the asset, so that when there's a downturn in the marketplace, because there will be, it's not a question of if it's when, you're better protected against that. But many systems that found themselves, I shouldn't say many, because there are only two in Massachusetts, found themselves at 100% funded in 2007, dropped down to 93% funded, 94% funded. found themselves at 100% funded in 2007, dropped down to 93% funded, 94% funded, 86% funded. And so I had to increase the funding schedule a little bit more to make up the difference.
Okay. And how does this get passed on to like our finance committees for planning purposes? Do they get, do they get some kind of, you know, they're going to have to be notified that it's gone up, and do they?
Yeah, when we develop the budget for next year.
How will you know to put this in? You'll just have a?
Well, if you pass it, we'll know.
You'll say, you'll put a sticky on the wall?
Well, actually, it'll be a little easier than that. As of January 1st, 2024, we're required to do a new valuation. So the retirement board will do a new valuation report. Please go on our website. You can find all of our valuation reports there, and we'll break it down for the towns and send them a notice of that. It goes directly to the treasurer, but it will be also posted on our website.
Okay.
So you guys will know what your FY '25 assessment is well ahead of time.
Great. All right. Thank you.
And I'm hoping, we were very conservative with these numbers. The one thing I don't ever want to come back is, well, treasurer, you told us it was 333, and it's 335. Okay? I did tell you that this was our best estimate. However, I asked my actuary to be as conservative as possible. So we use a mortality table in this instance that I think is probably unrealistic insofar as I think we'll outperform it.
Okay.
No guarantees.
All right. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Connor?
Sure. I see a lot of this literature. Everything's being compared to social security. And I guess my question is, they're really two different animals, right? I mean, you take somebody that goes into, you know, municipal government, and they work their 30 years, and they have an average income of $100,000. They could be looking at 75% of their pay as their pension, correct?
So unfortunately, in Plymouth County, the average pension is $27,000.
I understand that. But for comparative purposes, someone goes in there, stays in the plan, makes $100,000, gets 75% of their pay.
So the goal could be 80%.
So call it 80. Then someone goes into social security, works their whole career there, maximum $55,000. So, you know, there's really not a fair comparison when you start saying, hey, social security gets this, you know, scenario.
I'm looking at rates as well. You're saying that every year, there's a 3% CPI in the fund. I'm looking at social security, it's 0% in '16, .3 in '17, 2.0 in '18. I mean, the two big hits happened the last couple of years. So it's just a general comment. So now to educate me, some comments were made about that, you know, someone's in the retirement plan, they can't get social security. So give me an example of like, let's just say someone gets out of college, they work 10 years in a business, and they're contributing to social security, and then they do 30 years for the county. Do they get two payments? Do they get, does the social security get eliminated?
What happens is the table?
You have to speak into the microphone.
There's a table, you can go online, social security, and they call them good years. You have to have good years. And what they do is, it's prorated. In other words, your years worked as a non-public service person in business or whatever, you have to make a certain amount each year. And it started out around, I think it was around $10,000 you had to make back in the 60s. And each year it went up, and now you have to make over 20. I think it's probably $25,000 a year, maybe more, to have it be called a good year. So it eliminates people that just take part-time work, you know, for a little bit. You have to kind of work three-quarters of the year to make that table. And then each year you count good years. You have to have 20 good years in order to impact WEP. So what I mean by that is, if you have less than 20 years outside of public service, you only get about probably $400 or $500 a month, social security, which is probably, you know, a third of what the average person that worked most of their life in public service would have gotten if they got their full social security. Can everybody follow that? So if I worked 10 years, like you said, outside of public service, then I went 30 years or 20 years in public service, my social security amount might be $1,200. I only get 400 of that, one-third, okay? Unless I work over 20 years. And then for every year, more than 20 good years, I should say, you get 1/10 of the remaining, up to 30 years. So if you work more than 30 good years in public, in non-public service, you get, WEP goes away for you. Very rare. For instance, I worked most of my life in public service, as I said, but I did some work outside of public service every year. But out of that, I only accrued seven good years. So I'm under the 10, so I get completely WEP. Like in other words, and that's not too bad. At least, I mean, I'm getting a good retirement from my public service work, so, you know, $400 isn't going to affect me much. But the problem becomes when you have a survivor, because the survivors have a different plan from the federal government. It's called GPO, Government Pension Offset. And what that basically says is they go, most of them get nothing from social security. So they lose the social security. In addition to losing one-third, if they're lucky and their spouse picked, and they pick option C, they'll get two-thirds of their county retirement. I've had people that their spouse picked option A, along with them, they have the choice, and they get nothing now from either plan, the offset or the other one. And they get a little bit from social security because they're no longer getting a retirement, but it's not, it's not a lot of money. And I even had teachers up until last year that were under $12,000 a year. So, you know, in my middle borrower group. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah, in part, yeah. I know it's a little tricky. We talked about the extension of the target date to '29. How many times has the date been extended, say, in the past, in your tenure? The date for having the plan fully funded?
Once.
2007, you said?
So when I arrived, it got us, we extended it to 2030 once, and we brought it back to 2029.
Gotcha.
Because our performance was good enough to be able to do that.
No, I think the performance was great, looking at, did some reading on it.
Good.
My next question would be with regards to talking about the average pension, $27,000. Looking at, I know the numbers have changed, but on this report, you've got average retirees and disableds, 136 as of January 1st, 2022. I think it's come down a little bit. But of that, how many people are at the $27,000, you know, average?
Of all of our retirees?
Just the 136 in Carver. I'm trying to get a feel, here's my question. As someone that makes $100,000 pension, you can't segregate this increase just to people at an average of $27,000 pension. So if I got $100,000 pension, I'm getting the increase. If I'm getting $27,000, you know, help those guys out. But how much of the 136 people that we've got currently in the plan are kind of the $27,000?
I would have to, and I don't know when I could look, but I would say most of them. The vast majority of them. There's a misperception out there about public pensions, unfortunately. Certainly, there are some very solid public pensions. However, I will remind folks that if the employee was hired after April 1st, they paid 11% of their salary into that pension, which is more than enough to cover the cost. When you're on social security, and what is it, 6.25 right now is the employee contribution. So your public sector employees are contributing more to their retirement than those in social security. All the more reason to do something like this, I think. Because they've contributed more, and yet, many of them at the lower end of the salary spectrum haven't seen the increases. And you're absolutely correct, social security has been more recently, but that's because inflation has been higher recently. And that's why I think you're seeing this now from the legislature through down to this conversation because of what's happened with inflation the last couple of years. That's why we're here today saying, hey, this extra 2% seems to make a lot of sense.
Yeah, I like the idea of it, but again, going back to the comparison with social security, yes. If you're getting social security, you're getting 6.2% from the employer, 6.2% from the employer, right? If I go into this plan per these documents, I contribute 5%. And right now, your average return is 8.75%?
So would you say you contribute 5%?
Yeah.
Now, the average employee contributes 11.2.
I'm reading this.
11%.
Reading this, okay. But if I'm someone that's on, generally, people that look at social security, it's not enough to keep them, sustain them when they retire. Who knows, you know, the threat is not going to be there. So then they go to 401K plans. So now someone's putting in 10% in their 401K plan, 6% in social security, they're putting 60% away of their salaries, and they're still not getting their payout of a pension.
Well, that's also true of us. We have 457 plans. Most of the people invest in those. I did the Rochester interview, I discussed this with the Rochester Sleutman, and I had a Rochester resident, actually two with me. One worked for us for 30 years, and he's now truck driving. So many of our people go on, and he's 70, 70 years old. So it's not uncommon to have your public workers do that. And the public worker that, the rare one that makes $100,000 pension, this raise for them would be under .3%, it wouldn't be a 3% raise because obviously it's only on the first $16,000. So everyone will get the $320 increase.
I just know we can't do this, but I'd like the whole increase to go to the $27,000. So the people that really require it, is I guess is my.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's not how the legislature's.
I know, I know, I know. It's a wish list, but I know.
I will say this, but you make a great point about 401Ks. And I've been fascinated, fascinated by the concept of, and this isn't for this discussion, we can have some other time, and I'd love to talk about it, defined contribution plan versus defined benefit plan. Because for years, most corporations offered what we now know is a defined benefit plan. You worked for a company for 50 years, and they gave you a pension based on your years of service, and you were entitled to that pension for the rest of your life. But that shifted somewhere in the 60s, 70s, 80s, and corporations no longer wanted to bear that cost, and have shifted that cost back to the employee in saying, here's your 401K. You do the investments under the guise of, well, you're better managing your money. Well, while that may or may not be true, the challenge is that then you're not guaranteed a pension. You're only guaranteed a pension based on what your investment performance has done. So I think instead of arguing, well, the public pension system is too robust, I actually think the private pension system is headed to be a bust. I really worry about that. And you'll notice there's something called, not, don't confuse it with Secure 2.0, but secure choice pensions, and it's actually started out west in the state of Oregon and the state of Wisconsin, I'm sorry, Oregon and, Oregon and, what's the other? Washington, thank you, that started this. And they've allowed a portable private sector defined benefit plan for private sector employees. Because people are realizing, the solution in the pension system isn't to force people to make their own investment choices and have a defined contribution plan, it's to create a defined benefit plan so people know what they're getting in retirement. But that's a conversation for another day.
That's a big yield for private, public employees, obviously. A big reason why they become public employees is because they have that plan.
John, you good?
Last question would be on our overall finances. You know, every year, we're struggling to, you know, you know, pay our bills, get the financial management policies in place, capital requirements, you know, future contracts, things like that. I'm looking at our future forecast, and this kicks in, $75,000 kicks, $70,000 kicks in in 2025. That's 21% of our new growth. So you've got to keep that in mind. This comes with a price tag.
That's everything. Mr. Hoffman?
I'm all set for now.
Okay. I think most of my questions have been answered as well. Mr. Hamonetti, Mr. O'Brien, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I just, I really appreciate you having us in. I really like the thoughtful questions, so thank you. We had a chance to do this in a number of communities. I do, again, want to commend your administrator because he reached out to get this information. I do apologize if I wasn't here the last time, but recognize how important you are because he said, treasurer, we need you. Don't send other people. So I can tell you, other members on my team are other places, but I'm here in Carver.
Now, we appreciate it. And you have always been very generous with your time here in Carver, so we appreciate that.
Well, you're near and dear to my heart, as part of my former rep.
Thank you. All right. And this, you need answers from us by June 30th on this, correct?
So we're actually hoping for a vote today.
Now, well, and that's my question. So, yeah, we need to take action on this tonight one way or another. We can't put it off to a future meeting. So is there, if there's no other discussion from the board, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, so three to one. Thank you. Thank you both.
Very, very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for having us in, and we'll come back if you need us.
Always a pleasure, and I'm sure we'll be talking to you again.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Thanks.
Hopefully you get out of reasonable out.
I hope so.
Thank you.
All right. So next up is the approval of the Cranbury Village Agreement and deed. Mr. Fennessy, do you have a little background? This is, correct me if I'm wrong, town meeting took action on this. Now, all we're really talking about tonight is just ratifying their action by transferring the deed, correct?
Correct. Just administratively, we need to do this, take the vote, sign the documents. It's already been negotiated with the other side, the attorneys. And this goes back to town meeting when it was authorized, the transfer of the deed.
Right. So this is simply an administrative act on our, on our behalf. All right. All right. Is there, it seems like we have lost Ms. Hewens.
I think she went that way.
She went to the lake.
Okay.
Is it just the deed or is it the PMS of purchasing?
It's both. It's the deed and the agreement.
Okay. Well, while we wait for Sarah to return, are there any questions from the board on this? I think we've been through this here, obviously, Mr. Ryan, you're new to the board, but we've been through this a number of times, and obviously, town meeting has discussed this.
Right. Yeah, I participated at a town meeting during the discussion.
Okay.
I guess, go ahead.
Oh, so maybe just a couple of quick basic questions while we're waiting for Ms. Hewens to come back. So I understand that we, the town was managing the site and the well and was collecting fees for doing that. And the town did not have sufficient personnel to adequately cover it. So was that the reason behind the, you know, the transfer of the property to Cranbury Village?
Yes, if I may.
Just trying to understand the history.
You know, that may be one part of the reason to do this. It was a burden on the staff to take care of that, where they're willing to do it themselves. There was management of monies that come in that's not our monies that goes to take care of the plant. So all of that, you know, and just made sense to the board prior, at the town meeting, to transfer it back to them where it came from them. It was their land, their property, their wells. So now it'll go back to them, and they take on the full responsibility and demnify the town for anything going forward, so.
And so in terms of public water systems, we only have one other, other than this, that we were managing? Just North Carver?
We have North Carver, and then we have our own that supplies the police and fire and town hall and so forth.
And the homes on Medeville.
Housing.
That's right.
So how do we manage those two, just in terms of collecting fees and doing the maintenance? How are those both set up today?
So, so are you here?
Yeah.
Can you answer that, that question?
How do we handle North Carver and?
The North Carver Water District.
North Carver comes in.
But to the same thing, do they collect fees?
I'm not sure about that.
They bill.
Okay.
And then I'm sure the operation and maintenance maintains this one here.
Yeah, not maintains, but how do we, how do we get the money from the housing?
Yeah. Mr. Fennessy, you're referring to Ms. Mokwen, correct?
Yes.
Your question, why don't you come up to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I just think there was a little confusion as to where your question was being directed.
Yeah, I know, I know.
If the line is on the North Carver Water District system, then they're getting billed through the treasurer collector's office, and then anyways, they're getting paid from the building department downstairs, the building department. But I don't know about the other wells, if they're all on North Carver Water District, or if they're simply maintained. We don't have an enterprise one for anything else except the Cranbury Village and North Carver.
So we had three water districts, and two of which people are being billed, and but we?
Well, I don't know if that's really a water district, the wells that, yeah, I don't know if it categorizes as a water district.
It serves this complex.
And residents, too.
And the homes on Medeville.
Okay.
But it's not a district that wasn't set up by the legislature the way North Carver was.
Okay. And then I think the other question was if, if there was a situation where they, you know, they had an issue with the water, then how would the town be impacted by that? Would we, would we step in? Would we, you know, say, for example, is a lack of maintenance, or they have an issue on their end maintaining, and they have issues with the water, then what's the town's obligation to support that?
Are you thinking of the line behind the library?
No, the Cranbury Village.
Correct.
So we're transferring this. And that's, I know in town meeting, there's not much we can do at this point.
No, I mean, town meeting.
I'm just asking a couple of questions.
After this, we will not have that obligation, correct?
Yeah, so it's, just like any transfer of property, becomes their property and their problem, if there's a problem, that they take care of.
Whereas with Medeville Way, for example, we did step in when their filter broke down. Whereas with Medway, for example, we did step in when their filter broke down a couple of years ago, and that got resolved, the town had to do that.
We up fronted money for them, yeah.
Well, that was, that was kind of where I was going with the question, if they had the same similar filter, I keep hearing about filter issues with these systems. So say they run into that, and all of a sudden, they're in dire straits, you know, would the Cranberry? So they have a situation with the filter, they're in dire straits, but the town has, I know you're saying the town has no obligation, but in some respect, we kind of do.
I think that's part of the, we would be giving them, giving back the money from that.
Right.
We can use it for anything else.
No, it's only for the maintenance.
Maintain, so the wells, that's why we're giving it back to them.
And that's how they hire their own people, you know.
Okay. Anything else?
Sure. Just kind of off of Dan's point, the Cranberry Village Association has done a full well inspection, you know exactly what you're getting, they're comfortable with it, right?
Yes.
There's been some kind of review and.
So there's a maintenance company that oversees the maintenance of that facility, just like our North Carver, and so they did a check, and they were comfortable with what they're getting.
How recent was that?
I don't know. You'd have to ask North, oh, it am, I guess.
And then.
Oh, I can answer that if you want.
Okay. Ms. McCall, why don't you step up to the microphone here? But remember, all we're talking about, we want to make sure we stay on topic on the agenda here, which is strictly the administrative act of transferring the agreement and the deed. We're not, we don't want to get too far off topic here.
Yes, so just to let you know, we've pretty much dotted our eyes, crossed our t's, we had a small engineering company come out way back before we even kind of went through this, Small Water was there, they went through everything. So we know that it basically is going to need a little bit of maintenance, because it hasn't been upkept the way that it should have been. So we're going to have to initially put in, you know, a little bit of money, and we know that. Wednesday, actually, I have everybody coming. I got the town coming, like, your departments are coming, Small Water is coming, White Water is coming, I got everybody coming out. The phones are done, like, everything is, we've gone through everything, we are good. We're preparing to, you know, I mean, we maintain what we have now, we've got the, you know, we'll be able to plow over there, we'll be able to clean over there, we'll be able to, we know what already needs to be replaced, maintenance that needs to be done, so I'm pretty confident that, you know, the residents over there can move this forward, and we can continue to have water. We just put in a whole brand new water system over there, all new water mains, laterals to the houses, individual shut offs, so our water is pristine, and we plan on keeping it that way, so.
Great, thank you.
One more quick one. So in there, it mentions that this is all contingent on DEP acceptance, I assume they've been part of this, they can, they can reject this, which case it stays back with the town, but have they been part of the process, and does anybody know?
They're all part of the process.
Yeah, and it's already been approved. So it's already been approved, we've actually had DEP, because when the town had the wells, and we still had our water, they had to be tested, we were slotted with a different number through DEP, now everything is merged together, so it's all, we have one DEP number, one utility number, everything will be encumbeled into one slot for Cranberry Village. So our testing of the homes and the system through the community will be just like the testing that they actually do physically at the wells. So everything is slated under one. So the only thing we're waiting for is signatures. I've already signed my half, now I'm just going to make sure you guys sign yours.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, I heard that.
Anything else from the board on this?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Fennessey, because I know you got a lot of that information to Ms. McCall. We appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. I want to thank all of you, this has been a process, I think the first meeting we had was 2019. So this has been a process, and everybody has been great.
Long process, a lot of hard work, but we're very close to getting it done, so.
Yes, yes, the party of it.
Minutes away.
All right, is there anything else from the board? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Cranberry Village agreement and deed.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along. Next, an item that's been on our many agendas here at the Select Board, discussion, possible vote on the Finance Committee bylaw, as it relates to Finance Committee members serving on other boards and committees. And just a little clarification, so everyone's aware what we're, what the discussion is here, this is an item that Mr. Fennessey asked me to put on the agenda, to be able to give him some guidance. This is not a discussion on the whole Finance Committee bylaw, we've had that discussion many times in this, in this room, and in other rooms at Select Board meetings. This is, Mr. Fennessey had a couple of specific questions that he's asked the board to address, and if I get something wrong, well, please let me know. Number one is, we currently have Finance Committee members who would like to be appointed to other boards and committees, and we know what the Finance Committee bylaw says regards to that, you all have a copy of Town Council's opinion in your, in your packet. The other part of this is, we currently have some Finance Committees who were previously appointed by, to other boards and committees, and we need to give guidance to the town administrator as to how, how he handles any reappointments that might come up. So I guess we should handle these separately, and the first item would be whether members of the Finance Committee can be appointed to other boards and committees, and I think Council's decision and reading of that bylaw is, is, is pretty clear, at least the way I read it is, if you're on the FinCom, you, you currently cannot be appointed to another board and committee. I, there might be another, a member that disagrees, please let me know, but I think, Mr. Fennessey, that's how I understand it.
And you want to make a distinction between appointed and elected, because elected positions are a little different than appointed positions. So this is for my edification, as well as the boards, because the board appoints also to different committees, on whether we appoint anybody post this opinion to, that is sitting on the Finance Committee, or not. And if they are on the Finance Committee, whether they, whether, and serving in another position, whether we go by the opinion of Council, again, the suggestion that those people finish out those terms, and then choose one or the other, but.
So I think we should handle them separately, I think we should handle them separately, and I think the first question before the board is, right now, from tonight going forward, whether a member, a currently serving, current serving member of the Finance Committee can be appointed to another board or committee, and.
So if I may, it might be good for you to read the bylaw itself for the people out there, in the audience, it's in the email.
It's in the email, by the.
It is. You want me to read it?
Yes, because I'm not sure I have it in front of me.
Any registered voter of the town shall be eligible for appointment to the Finance Committee or Council on Aging, except that no elected or appointed town officer or regular town employee or person holding a position of financial responsibility for the town shall be eligible for membership in such agency. No member of a special town committee shall be authorized to vote as a member of such agency on any matter pertaining to the duties of a special committee, of which he is a member. That's the bylaw, that's written.
So, oh, you actually did, you can.
I did. So I guess tonight, if we have to vote on the interpretation of the bylaw, that's, we're not changing the bylaw, so, you know, you have to basically interpret the bylaw and say, okay, we're going to vote on how it's written, now whether or not that impacts the future, which we probably at some point should discuss, because it's, I can understand there's a lot of ambiguity and confusion in the wording of the bylaw. I look at it, and I'm saying, oh, can they be appointed to both the Council on Aging and the Finance Committee? What does that mean? You know, it's like, so.
There was an email that Brett Corbo sent us, maybe a year or more ago, I'm trying to remember, where he also, and I wish we had that now, I forgot to bring it, but he also indicated that the conflict, that as he saw it, was that if you were appointed to the Finance Committee and to a committee that was set up by either state or local, state law or local bylaw, that was the main issue. So, for example, you can't be on the Finance Committee and the planning board, because that's set up by statute, or, you know, Finance Committee and maybe the earth removal, because there's an earth removal bylaw, I'm just throwing that out.
Yep.
So, in my opinion, just reading what he says, it sounds like the issue is, no, first, no, they can't be appointed to other boards, and B, yes, we should let them just serve out their terms, and then let them decide which board they want to be on.
Yeah, and I think, I think, again, I'm trying not, I'm trying to keep these questions separate, but it seems like they're going to be getting, going to be merged, so I remember, we had a meeting, and, and you may want to, Mr. Ryan, if you haven't, if you didn't see it, there was a meeting that took place in either late March or early April of 2023, wasn't here, it was at the police station, where we discussed the Finance Committee bylaw with Mr. Corbo, and it hit a long, a long time, it was a very long discussion, and that would be a good, that would give you a lot of background as to why the wording is what the is, or what the wording is, and why it is what it is, because we did have discussions at that meeting about possibly changing the bylaw, and when we talked about various things with, with Council, we sort of got some background about wording and why it was the way it was, and it wasn't.
Right.
We tried to simplify it, and it wasn't as easy, it was easier said than done, and I think, and correct me if anyone thinks I'm wrong, in this board, that the wording may not be as clear as it could be, but I think the meaning is, is pretty clear, it's been interpreted by Council, oh, back to, Ms. Hewens, you were chair when we had our first discussion about this, and it, and it's always been the same, the interpretation by Council has been the same every single time, so, and I think, Mr. Hoffman, you were on the board as well at that time, that was back during COVID, that was a Zoom meeting, so is the feeling of this board currently, that if you're currently on the Finance Committee, you can't be appointed to another board or committee?
I have one caveat, if I may, I think there is currently a member of the Finance Committee who's also a member of the redevelopment authority, but my understanding was that that could happen, because that is not a town committee?
Oh, I'm talking about going forward, I'm talking about if someone comes to, comes to Mr. Fennessey and says, hey, I would like to be a member of this board.
I'm talking about going forward, too, so I don't know, Mr. Fennessey, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so, so, I'll read an opinion. Please be advised, it's my opinion that a member of the RDA cannot be removed from that position, because they're also on the Finance Committee, but that's answering a question, can they be removed? An elected, elected person on the RDA. Pursuant to general law 221B, three members of the RDA are elected by the voters, and one member is appointed by DHCD. The town does not have the authority to alter the term of office for elected officials, or officials whose terms are created by statute. I think that's what you're thinking of.
This particular member is elected, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And that says, therefore, it's my opinion that the person can continue to serve in the position on the RDA till the end of his term, even if he is also on the Finance Committee, because you can't alter it mid, mid term.
So, a couple of points, I mean, I do understand the other side, where they're saying that it's hard to get people on committees, and you tend to have a lot of people who volunteer their time, and, and are great to have, and they're on multiple committees, and they make a big impact and a difference to the town, but what I understand is that as an appointing authority, either the town administrator or the board, we have to abide by the bylaw when we make our appointments, so if it's clearly written in such a way that it's saying that we cannot make appointments as a board to, you know, that doesn't fit the bylaw, then we're stuck, I mean, until the bylaw gets changed, I think the point is that you have to go by what the bylaw has written today, and, and understand, we have to fix that other problem, because we, we need to have people, good people, volunteer and be able to help us out, because we, we rely on them.
So is there agreement among the board that going forward, there's guidance to Mr. Fennessey, if he gets an application from a member of the Finance Committee for another board or committee, that that appointment cannot be made? Is that?
Or reverse, somebody who's on another committee applies to the Finance Committee.
Right, right, either, either way.
Well, it covers.
Right, they'd have to choose one or, or the other, is that?
Well, it covers us, as well as, we appoint, so we have to, are we looking for a motion? Or are we just saying?
I don't think we need one, do you think we need a motion?
Are we saying the agreement is that you just got to go by the bylaw?
All right. And, sorry, just to go back, didn't we say, we've gone over this a couple of times as I've been on the board, didn't we say that, you know, if you were currently on a board or committee, you could finish?
Yeah.
We did, that wasn't gotten to that part yet. That was the suggestion that I made over at the, at the fire station that, that night, that we, we allow anyone that had been previously appointed to a board or committee to, and that would be my suggestion tonight, that we allow them to finish out their term, and when the term expires, then they're going to have to, they got to choose, either they're on the Finance Committee, or they, they choose another, their other board or committee, and they, they decide.
Mr. Corbo does say, that being said, it's my understanding that members of the Finance may hold, and I think he means currently do hold, other elected or appointed positions in the town, in order to avoid a disruption of the governance, and in fairness to these individuals who have accepted multiple positions of their faith, I recommend they be permitted to serve in their current positions until the end of their term, and then they would have to choose.
Yep.
And if I may, just, I appreciate it being codified with the vote, because I think what happens is, we go to these meetings, and some people say certain things, and then they remember what they said, but not what other people said.
That's fine. So any other discussion on this? And, Mr. Hoffman?
So I think what we, on this vote, part A, there's a part A and part B type thing, so part A is, we all agree that through the, the way the bylaw is right now, the FinCom members cannot serve on any other committees.
We can't appoint anybody.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
So pointing, whether it's through the Select Board or the town administrator, are elected.
Well, elected, they'd have to choose which they would be on.
Right. Okay. But, but again, I think that has to be in there, too, because if all of a sudden someone runs, well, FinCom's, FinCom is, so if you're running, if you're a member of the FinCom and you, you run for an office, and then you win.
Couldn't it be, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fennessey, sometimes I try to oversimplify things, but couldn't the wording on a motion just be, it's the understanding of the Select Board, that a, a member of the Finance Committee cannot be appointed or elected to another?
Well, they can be elected, you can't say they can't be elected to another.
Okay, yeah, that's true.
Because they can be elected, then they have to choose.
How about cannot hold any other?
Can hold, can hold any other appointed or elected office?
I just want to make sure we cover everything, because it can get tricky and.
So that could be the first part of a motion, a member of the Finance Committee cannot hold any other appointed or elected office?
Yes.
What, what is your point of information?
What happens if you're on the Finance Committee, and you're trying to make a subcommittee, like a committee to verify, I don't know, the road it's meant to pass?
Yeah, so a member of the Finance Committee can be a member of an ad hoc committee, so a temporary committee, so.
Could be on, could be on a capital plan.
Well, it says even here, except for positions on special committees.
That's right.
That would be considered a special committee.
But we, and we had that same discussion with Mr. Corbo over there, so.
I just want to make sure we cover both, that's all.
That's fine. And, Mr. Ryan?
I think to your point, we're breaking it into two parts here, so the first part is simply saying that, you know, we're going to make a statement that future appointments, you know, that are made to the committees cannot violate the bylaw, so that means you can't take somebody who's on another committee and appoint them to the Finance Committee, or you can't appoint somebody who's on the Finance Committee to another committee, so I think the simple first part of it is saying, and, you know, we're just basically stating that we're giving direction, saying that, you know, when we make, when we, or the town administrator makes a future appointment, they have to abide by the bylaw, meaning you can't appoint anybody that's in conflict with the bylaw, that's the first part of it. Let's not talk about the people that are already involved yet, but I think you're just looking for a motion for direction to say, you know, step one, let's just say that going forward, we're not going to make any appointments that are going to conflict with the bylaw as written today.
So would the motion be that if we appoint someone to the Finance Committee, they cannot be a member of any other board committee or commission?
No, we're not saying that. We're saying that, you know, that's the second part of this, we're saying, we will not make We're saying we will not make an appointment of anybody to cause the conflict. That's what we're saying. So we're not gonna appoint anyone that would create the conflict. So going forward, we will not, won't appoint anyone to the Finance Committee that's on another committee, elected or, or likewise, we're not going to appoint anybody, you know, to the Finance Committee. So it's just taking care of both the angles of this.
How would you phrase that, Mr. Fennessey?
You're, you're the attorney in the room.
I would say that the board's policy will be to not appoint anybody who is currently on the Finance Committee to any other, any other committee, except those that may be specifically identified, like special committees.
So.
All right. We have a motion.
Well, there's two parts to it, okay.
That's one, yeah.
Well, on Part, Part A, we have a, we have a motion. Is there, is there?
You can't appoint anyone from a committee, another committee, to the Finance Committee, or you can't appoint anyone from the Finance Committee to another committee.
Yeah, true.
So that's what I meant by you only got half of the motion. The motion should say both of those, that we're not allowed to appoint any Finance Committee member to another committee. Likewise, anybody on another committee can't be appointed to the Finance Committee. That's the two parts of it.
Okay.
All right.
So.
Well, yeah. I think, yeah, I think just the first half covers both ends. Because if you can't appoint anybody, so if there, it's really relating to somebody's on the Finance Committee that not, according to this, would not be eligible to be appointed to something else.
That's the first part, correct. And the second part is if somebody comes from the Cultural Commission and says, I wanna get on the Finance Committee, we'd say, sorry, we can't, you can't be appointed to the Finance Committee.
Unless they leave the Cultural Commission.
Exactly, so that's what we're saying. That's why it's a two-part, we're saying both sides of it.
Can, can we discuss this without having a second? Yet, or do we have to?
No, no, we can, absolutely.
So, I guess, I guess, so let's step back for a second. What is the goal of what we're trying to discuss right now? Is it to clarify the?
The bylaw.
What, the bylaw? Or to give the Town Administrator?
The County Administrator guidance as to who he can appoint to what committees.
Okay, because, because what I'm thinking is, is it can be as simple as, a member of the Finance Committee cannot serve on any other Board of Committee, except for subcommittee. So, so, but, so again, there's, because now we're saying about appointing, whether it's the Town Administrator or the Select Board appoint, if we make it plain and simple, if that's what we all agree on.
Yeah.
That member of FinCom Committee cannot serve on any other Board of Committee, except for a special committee.
That's what I, I said in my first motion.
If you wanna leave it at that.
Second.
No, but, no, but what I'm, what I'm asking is, so again, is it more to give the Town Administrator and the Select Board in writing, direction on what to do? Or are we clarifying the FinCom bylaw?
No, we're not clarifying, we're just, we're giving guidance to the Town Administrator. That's what we're doing.
It's also clarifying the bylaw because we think that, and our council thinks that's what the bylaws say.
So, so can we just make a motion as simple as no member of?
Well, first of all, we, right now, we have a motion. And I, I don't know if it was seconded, there was a motion, was, what, did you second the motion?
Second Jim's motion.
Well, but I don't think that was the motion, I think Mr. Ryan made a motion.
It was actually my motion.
I was just kidding, I'll take my second back.
Elaine, there was, there was a motion.
So, so the motion, which I think covers it, motion by Huens that a member of the Finance Committee.
Gonna update, Renzi's reading this.
I'll watch out.
Oh, no, don't update.
It's not a touch, huh? Motion by Huens that a member of the Finance Committee is not eligible to hold any other appointed or elected office, except special committees, second by Hoffman.
Good.
Cannot hold any other office. So that means you can't appoint them.
Could you read that, that motion one more time?
Who's laughing? Motion by Huens that a member of the Finance Committee is not eligible to hold any other appointed or elected office, well, that's not true at all.
Just say appointed.
Yeah, appointed. Because you have the right to run for election.
Okay. Ms. Huens, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, a member of the Finance Committee is not eligible to hold any other appointed office.
Except special committees.
Except special committees.
Can I ask a question, you're leaving unelected.
I know.
We are on purpose, John.
Because they can be elected.
When they get elected, then they have to choose. But we can't unelect them ourselves, you know what I mean?
You can't prevent them.
You can't, you can't stifle elections.
All right, so we have a, we have an amended.
Pardon your bylaw.
Okay, but this is a different question, this is about appointments.
It isn't the bylaw.
Those who's elected, follow that.
The, the bylaw still is in, is in, is in place. So we have an amended motion by Ms. Huens. Is there a second of that amended motion?
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Now, one more time, please, just read back that motion.
Original motion, I kind of lost that. Motion by Huens that a member of the Finance Committee is not eligible to hold any other appointed office, except special committees, second by Hoffman.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on that motion?
So again, just to be, just to clarify, this is to give the Town Administrator direction?
And the board.
And the board, direction on any future appointments.
That's right, we're not changing any bylaws, we're not amending any bylaws. We're simply giving the Town Administrator guidance on who he can and cannot appoint.
Okay. Because I, I agree with what Joanne said about the elected part, but that's not what this is. This is to talk about future appointments.
That's right. From this day forward. We're just guiding, giving guidance to the Town Administrator.
Just wanna make sure that everybody here and out in TV land understands all of that.
That's why we're doing it the way we're.
Okay.
So what happens if an elected official wants to be on the Finance Committee?
They'll have to choose, correct, Mr.? Per the bylaw, it's an existing style, they'll have to choose, one way or the other, which they wanna be on, whether they're elected position or the Finance Committee.
I mean, it's not in your bylaw. That means that the authority who's appointing has to tell that person that, it's verbal, it's not.
It is in the bylaw.
It's in the existing bylaw.
It is in there, it says that no elected or appointed town officer, et cetera.
So nobody can hear her on TV.
Right, I know, I know. And we're really, we're past the, I know, I know, I understand.
Right, that's, right, that's why I think it was confusing where the FinCom bylaw was being introduced in this discussion, it's not, has nothing to do with that.
I understand.
While we're talking about the appointing.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. Again, we're strictly giving guidance to the Town Administrator per his request. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that part of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Then we have Part Two, which is, which is guidance to the Town Administrator on folks that may currently, that may have, may be on the Finance Committee and are currently serving on another Board or Committee for a, per a previous appointment. And, and my suggestion here is, I think it's exactly what council has stated and have stated in the past, I think we should just allow their current terms to expire and when they expire, they have to make a decision whether they wanna stay on whatever Board of Committee they may be on, or the Finance Committee.
Yeah, so I don't think there's a, I guess the question would be, is there a governing authority for that? I mean, it happened because of people not following the, the bylaw. So at this point, I would say we take no action and just let it ride out and do what it does because you wouldn't undo anything.
Well, I guess the question.
I think we should, I think we should vote the way council recommends it. It's a very clear recommendation, that way, you know, I can say, well, wait, some other meeting, you said there's some, this meeting, you said that.
How do you take any action to change it?
I think there was concern, there was concern that, that if we interpreted the bylaw literally, that those people would be off Boards of Committees now.
Okay.
And I think what we're trying to do is, is, is make a point that they're not, that we're gonna allow their terms to expire as they expire and at that point, they'll have to.
They won't be reappointed.
They won't be, they won't be reappointed, they'll just have to choose, rather than just tomorrow they're off.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that those members of the Finance Committee that currently hold other elected or appointed positions in the town be permitted to serve in their current positions until the end of their term and that they be informed that once one of their terms expired, they will no longer be permitted to serve on the Finance Committee and in another position. That's straight from Mr. Corbo's opinion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Mr. Fennessey, do you need anything else from the board on this particular item?
No.
That, all your questions, that answers everything?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right. Next up on our agenda is a discussion and possible vote on Select Board and Town Administrator Goals and Objectives. So the board submitted a number of goals and objectives. I will read them off. First, I'll read the selected, the suggested Select Board Goals for 2024. And let's see, they came in two separate emails. So, these are goals for the Select Board. Continue to assess and choose projects for ARPA funding. Continue working to broaden citizens' participation on Board, and Boards and Committees. Making sure the town budget process for next fiscal year is started earlier and finished earlier than the past two years have been. Making sure the financial management policies are followed during this current year's budget process. Support and endorse an updated housing production plan, an updated master plan, and an updated open space and recreation plan, all of which are currently out of date so the town will once again be eligible for state grant funds. Work preemptive, work preemptively when opportunities to build affordable housing or to acquire important open space parcels occur to get the job done. Health and safety of Carver residents include aquifer protection and clean drinking water. Management of taxes through business, business development and financial management. Attracting businesses helps with tax rates, financial management, pay off debts earlier, capital building stabilization fund. Let's see, revenue-driven. Work with the Planning Board to develop a strategy for new growth that balances the agricultural nature of the town while providing needed funding for town operations and create policies and procedures for appointed committees that are in adherence to town bylaws. And the listed, you may have two different lists there. One was sent out, and one was sent out in a follow-up email.
Was that an email?
That was sent out in a follow-up email. So that's a total of 10 different Select Board Goals and Objectives. Perhaps we could each talk of, just briefly talk about whichever ones were ours and then at the end, we could probably rank these. There's, there's 10 objectives. Someone may have another suggestion, I would, I would say that perhaps you should take three of them and, and we'll give each one a weighting, say, say threes, twos, and ones. Rank three of them as, choose three of them as threes, three of them as twos, and the rest is ones, and whichever ones get the highest ratings will be the, that'll be the order of the Select Board Goals and Objectives. Anyone, anyone have an issue?
One being the highest?
One, no, three being the highest. So whichever one gets the highest score. So if one was to get 15, then obviously that would be unanimous among the whole board.
So each of us get three votes of three, two, and one against the ones we want, then you just sum them up, is that what you're saying?
No, I would say we, we rank each, each one of them. I would say we, we pick three threes, three twos, and the rest of them are ones.
I think, through you, Mr. Chairman, that number three and number four are fairly similar because it has to do with the budget. So.
And number eight.
Eight's a little different.
A little bit different, yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, as far as the actual, with the budget, it's kind of the.
So shouldn't that be on the Town Administrator one, rather than on the Select Board one?
Well, I think, I think the Select Board, I think it could be both. I think the Select Board has a, has a duty to sort of hold the, the people, folks' feet to the fire, to make sure they follow those policies. I think it could also be a Town Administrator goal.
That's, our goal is to make sure you do your goal. If you will, if you will. But I think on those two, do you guys, does everyone agree that?
We could merge those, we could merge those together, I think.
So I wouldn't wanna waste a three, two, and one on both of them.
So we'll just have a total of nine, nine choices instead of, instead of 10. So we just go around the, the room, mine are the first two, so I guess I'll, I'll start. I mean, to me, the ARPA projects, I mean, that, those have been, I think last year, that was my most important, I think, item for the board. And I think this year, they would continue to be the most important thing before the board. This is a once, a one-time chance to get things done that perhaps we didn't have money for in the budget. And I think it's important that we, we, we choose these projects and that we choose these projects early so we send a message, first of all, the Plymouth County Commissioners, remember, this is items that have to be approved by the Plymouth County Commission. So I think it's important that we get these items to them early so we get that funding back. Because all these things are, one thing about ARPA is it's not an open-ended project. There are, there are deadlines to submit items, there are deadlines to get them approved, and there are deadlines for the town to complete them. And not to jump out of order, but one of my goals for the Town Administrator was to follow up on the approved ARPA projects. Because once we choose them and, and get them through to Plymouth County, then it becomes inherent on the Town Administrator to, to follow up with departments to make sure they, they get done, so we don't forfeit that money. So that was my reason for choosing ARPA. And as far as citizen participation of Boards of Committees, I think that's pretty obvious. We discussed that earlier. We need broader citizen's participation. We started a program last year where we sent out applications to join a Board of Committee with every tax bill. And I think we, as I recall, we got some back from that. I think we also, Mr. Fennessey, you and Ms. Weston reached out to some of the, the villages in town, and that's something we could continue to do. There may be new, other ways that we can come up with to reach out to people. We need to reach out to, to citizens who aren't currently taking part in, in town government and, and try to get them to, there's lots of people out there that are, whether it's financial or, or with the environment or what have you, they have skills and we need, we need those skills, so.
I would hate to wait this long, but town meetings are always a good option, you know, you put out a sign up?
It is, and that's, that's.
Sheet and say, we're looking for people, sign up. And that's, and I, the old days, I used to get Finance Committees through that. And, you know, somebody, back at a town meeting, I would say, hey, can you turn the Finance Committee?
No, and that's an excellent option.
Rod Clark was probably one of those guys, and Steve Frat one night.
Yeah, but no matter how we do it, I think we need to, we need to bring more people into, into our Boards of Committee function, so, so those are my two.
And we have, you know, the farmer's market, I don't know if we can set up some kind of a display at the farmer's market.
We probably should, I'm sure they'd, they'd allow us to.
Something about to recruit.
I've got a question on number two.
Sure.
Generally comparing these goals and objectives, they have to be something that's you can, you can obtain, you can have a success or fail, or you can measure. So ARPA, ARPA, here you go, here's your list of things you need to complete, you complete them, you pass, you don't, you fail. I don't know how this works with the committee working for broadening citizens' participations on Boards and Committees. If, if we don't get a lot of people, you fail. I don't know if that's fair, you know what I'm saying? It's like, how, how do you measure it?
This is your goal.
Yeah, this is, this is our goal.
Oh, that's our, oh, that's our goal.
I, I don't, I don't know.
Let's take that off the list.
This may not be a pass or fail, but I think it, it's clear that we need to try to get it done and, and.
Well, it's an easy goal. I mean, you just say increase by 10%. You come up with a number, you say we want to increase by 10% the number of.
The problem is, you know, you can't make people do something.
No, you can't, but you can.
What we can do is broaden the ways in which we disseminate information to encourage people to like a town meeting, like an old town day. But you can't make people.
No, no, you can't.
So either I think it shouldn't be there or it's been changed so that. Setting a goal of 10%, I mean, you can't make people do it though.
No, you can't, but if you advertise, like you said, maybe if you take measures to advertise and put things out in an old town day, town meeting, you might get sign up.
We should broaden our ways and outreach.
Well, and I think that's, that's, if you want to set a, a goal, or if you want a codified goal, maybe that's what it is. Maybe it's not so much, you've got five new people to apply. Maybe it's that you found five new ways to reach out to people. Or, or something like that, maybe that's, that's what you do. You can, you can, you can only reach out to folks, you can't make them apply.
I agree.
I, I just think we, we can't continue to ask the same folks to volunteer over and over, and we need more people to help spread the, spread the burden.
Asking them to volunteer.
You can always.
But I, I think changing it to continue working to broaden our outreach to encourage citizens' participation, like you said.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm fine with that. I'm fine, I'm fine with that if we continue working to broaden our outreach to reach out to people and citizens and boards and committees, I'm fine with that.
Maybe to John's point, you limit that you come up with some number and say, you know, do five events or three events or something this year that will reach out.
Sure, really, it's more, I think it's just finding ways to reach out to people. It might not be an event per se, because obviously putting applications in the tax bills is not an event, but it, it is a way to reach out to a lot of folks. So moving on, I don't know whose goals three and four were.
Those were mine. First, one of the things I was just thinking of, that all nine of these are very good goals and objectives, and I don't think we, if we just rank the top three, do we forget about the next six? I mean, I think these are all good goals and ranking them, I don't think is, is fair. I don't want to say fear, that's not a good word, but, but prioritizing. But, I mean, I would hate to have number eight and nine not get touched this year. I think nine goals for, for a year isn't unreasonable for us to, to do.
Would the board prefer not to prioritize these? Just set these nine goals as select board goals?
I would, and, and I, I just want to add a little bit to that, that numbers six and seven, I mean, if you were to combine them, depend on numbers, what, sorry, six and seven. I renumbered them now, so that would be the former seven and eight.
Oh, okay.
The aquifer protection and the management of taxes, and that attractive businesses helps with the tax base, actually, not the rates. But those two things, protecting the aquifer and helping with our tax base, happen if you update your open space plan, for example, and your master plan, and presumably your, possibly your housing production plan. But particularly open space and recreation, because one of the ways to make sure you prevent tax-negative, single-family home development is to protect open space when it comes available. You can't do that if you've got an outdated plan, because you can't leverage state funds.
So I, I personally am fine with making all these goals as, as goals of the select board. I think I heard in the past from when we've done this previously that people felt they should be prioritized, which is why I brought that up. But I'm fine with, I'm fine with making these nine goals and objectives, goals and objectives for the year of the select board.
That's fine, I guess the question would be then, how do you, or how do you start to execute them? I mean, what do we need? I mean, that's probably the reason for prioritizing is because if you don't want to take on more than we can actually handle, and at the end of the year, say, we had nothing done because there was just too many, too many things.
Well, I think what you do is you get them on, as individual items, you get them on an agenda. And you discuss, obviously they're not all going to be on the same agenda, but you get them on an agenda. That's what we did last year, and we.
I mean, I think like, like ARPA's fairly, has to be done fairly quickly because it does have an end date. You know, the, the budget, three and four, have the budget, that has to, we'll hope to have that started and fairly quickly as well. Some things, not that broaden citizen, citizen participation has to be put off for months and months, but that can be like an ongoing thing. I just, I think when you prioritize it or put a number to it, all of a sudden you get to the end, those last quarter, and, oh, we didn't have time, but we can kind of just do this.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Just, just an idea.
Seven and one may go together too. I put seven in, which was the one with the aquifer protection. But, you know, with the ARPA funding, it's all about the drinking water too, so we might be able to.
None of our ARPA funding projects were about drinking water.
No, going forward, I meant, can we?
Maybe going forward.
We're saying we want to assess and choose projects, can we come up with a project that might help to support number seven?
Well, yeah, I'm emphasizing, obviously number five is mine. The open space and recreation plan has been out of date since 2015.
Right, so that might help.
And we need to get grant money to protect some parcels that we're going to lose. And if we're worried about protecting our aquifer, that's, that's, there's no better way to do it.
Sure, and again, remember, ARPA, ARPA funding is narrowly defined. You can't just use the ARPA money for anything.
I read it all, yeah, but a lot of it was drinking water related.
Water systems.
Yeah, it was, it was more systems, it was more system. It's too bad, if ARPA had come a couple of years earlier, we might have been able to use a lot of ARPA money to help the North Carver water system, but unfortunately we.
It was 200,000.
We, we did.
But again, most of the town sits on the aquifer, except the very, very far in the west corner. And most of the town doesn't have a drinking water, doesn't have a system. So that, to me, we can talk about protecting the aquifer, but unless we get that open space plan finished and get it to the state and get that running, it's just tough.
Okay. Hi, so I think, Mr. Hoffman, you were discussing your.
Right, as you can tell, the budget and financial, this year's budget process was important. To me, that's why I put two in. No, I mean, that's, we've, I've talked to Mr. Fantasy before about that, and I just think, we just don't want to get in the predicament, we're in the last two years where we're coming down to crunch time worrying about the budget. And I know we do have a plan, and again, I know that's, that is the town administrator, that was one of the goals, but I think it's our job not to just say, okay, he's got it taken care of, let's keep checking in on it to make sure. And if there is any issues, that we should help him with that. Whereas I think in the past, it was just, it was last minute and we, so, that's.
Yeah, I agree, and you have former finance committee members here, so we can certainly help weigh in and fix a few things that need to be fixed.
Right, you certainly do. Am I correct, Ms. Huens, that five and six are yours?
That's correct, and again, I think if we, if we take care of that issue, getting those plans updated, same with the master plan, and again, you can have your open space plan updated, but if you don't have your master plan updated, there's certain grant lines you can't get either. That's been out of date since 2017. So, so in order to, you know, acquire open space projects, as in six, to take care of our aquifer protection, is it, which is seven, to try to attract things that help our tax base rather than tax-negative, single-family homes, that's, that's eight. And it also takes care of the, the part of number, whatever the number is of John, Mr. Carter's first thing, have worked with planning board to develop new growth that balances agriculture, we can. So we don't lose that base and that important part of our character. So I think those things all go together, and I think it's a very concrete thing that we can do, actually secure and have that approval process, set it up to the state.
Good, okay, seven and eight, I don't know who's.
Those were mine.
Mr. Ryan?
So when I was trying to think about what's important to the residents, I'm thinking health, health, safety and affordability, that's kind of the top things that I, I thought about. So I said, you know, probably I'll split them into health and safety, you know, whatever we can do to promote that, and that includes, you know, clean drinking water or whatever other things we need to take care of. So as long as we're aware of programs and things we can do to continue to promote that. And then affordability, I mean, you know, we've got, you know, a rural town, and so it puts a lot of burden on the taxpayers, and so we've got to kind of continue. And that's the planning too, that you're referring to, Ms. Huens. And we just should look at that and make sure we're aware of what feeds into that tax rate and what decisions we can be making to make sure it's in control and, you know, we maximize everything we can do to keep the rates affordable for people.
Well, again, we don't return the rate, we just determine the split, as I was sure you know.
We do, although, you know, there's probably some programs or techniques, I mean, like we said, if you, the more business you can attract in, then that's going to help to shift the burden a lot. So as long as we're aware of the factors that feed into what calculates the taxes and what decisions can be made in the future to move us in a direction of making it more affordable for people.
And, and for quite a number of years, we've still shifted the burden to commercial, a little way, slightly away from residential.
We have, in fact, I believe right now we're a 1.45 shift, so that we're pretty high.
Right, and I know my, our board back in the old days was trying to bring it closer together so we would attract more businesses. We felt that if you could attract more businesses by keeping that in check, by having more businesses, thus you'd lower the tax rate for, for everybody, so, but if you want to, you know, it's, that's the decision. There's a discussion we should have in the future and figure what we can.
It's always a difficult, difficult balance.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, back in the year 2000, when we did our first master plan in 21 years, the guy who helped us update it said, the quality and quantity of the type of businesses you would need to attract in Carver to make a significant dent in your, in your taxes, it would totally change the base of Carver. And I really believe that, and I think that over the years that I've been on this board, we, we have gotten a lot of new businesses in town. And this board complained, you know, businesses don't want to come here. There's new businesses everywhere, and there's been businesses here for years that it's not part of doing business.
We do have areas though, that we may be able to look to develop a little bit. We have the airport, uh, business district over there, which obviously has grown a great deal on the Plymouth side, and as soon as you get to the Carver side, and that almost stops. And of course, we have the North Carver area, and there may be programs we can pursue that.
Technology's changed so much since 2000. I mean, look at the Amazon warehouses and the robotics and all that stuff. I mean, there are, back then, you didn't have that, and that's, that may be a different kind of a. Well, I don't know, I'm just saying, you know, you've got, you've got differences in.
All right, again, we're just here to set our goals, and we'll, during the course of the, the year, we'll have various agenda items, and you may have a suggestion for an agenda item that we can use to discuss these things. Tonight's more to set our goals for the year rather than discuss the, the details. So, and then, Mr. Carter, that leaves you by default here.
Yeah, I mean, just thought process was, you know, we've got two elected boards here, the select board and the planning board, and, and, you know, I don't, I don't think we've ever had, maybe we, maybe it's been, never been done in the past, but more like a joint meeting, joint session to find out, you know, what is the plan for new growth in the future? You know, we, we need it, you know, we seem to operate in silos, so I thought maybe it's a good idea that we start having something, you know, a working group together to find out where we can find some agreement. The second was just creating policies and procedures for appointed committees that are adherents of town bylaws, you know? Every time we talk to these committees, it seems to be on-the-job training. You get there and you just learn by, you go to a couple of classes, then you wait for the chairman to teach you things to do. But, you know, just examples of, if you're going for a permit, you know, what do you have to file for the permit? What has to be delivered? What's the inspection period? When it's done, who follows up so that everybody knows exactly how to coordinate a process? So that's where I, where I was coming from.
Okay.
Chair, could I make a comment on the, working with the planning board? I think that's a terrific idea, so don't, don't get me wrong, I say the next thing. And that is that, you know, having, having served on the planning board for 10 years, I know that the planning board and the, the master plan, which is extremely important, can have a lot of goals, what they'd like to see here, but it's like making people join committees. You can't make a business come here. You can figure out incentives, for example, to get something done that you codify and you're zoning, but you can't make them. So, for example, we, at one point, realized there were two illegal apartments over some of the stores in town, so we decided, hey, you know, people need a place to live, why don't we just make it legal for them to have apartments? Well, there are still only two legal apartments over stores, but they're allowed to do it. So again, it's kind of, it's good to do that, but it's just a little bit of a caution for us not to get too frustrated about because you can't make people do things that they don't want to do or businesses do that they don't want to do.
Again, these are discussion items that we can have during the course of the year. So then we'll move on to our town administrator goals, our, the select board's goals for the town administrator.
We're just going to keep all nine of these, right?
Shouldn't?
I'm sorry, we're just going to keep all nine of these not graded?
Yeah, we're going to keep all nine of them, not, not grade them. And I guess going, as we get into the town administrator goals, would the board feel comfortable doing the same thing for the town administrator? Do we want to keep these and not grade them, or do we want to, want to rank them?
We have nine again, is that how many?
We have.
Because we have seven and then two.
Yes, we have, we have nine.
Well, again, it comes down to capacity, so we'll have to figure out what's the scope of these goals and can they actually be done?
And when we look at, you know, our goals and the town administrator's goals, once we start these, you know, we're not here 40 hours a week, so don't our goals become the town administrator's goals? Now we've got 18 of them?
They do, but I think some of them are incumbent upon us to put it on an agenda and, and discuss and try to come up with an action plan. While these town administrator goals, we're, we're telling the town administrator, we, these are goals that the board wants you to work toward in 2023. And when we get to his evaluation in early 2024, you know, these will be some of the things that we'll evaluate him on, how, how he did on these, these goals. So I guess getting back to that, does the board want to rank these? Or do we want to leave them unranked as we did the select board goals?
I think we should leave them unranked as well.
Okay, although, I guess I'd like to hear from Mr. Fantasy what he thinks, and then, you know, sometimes if you rank them, it gives them a better focus of, well, what's really important.
That's going to be my suggestion as well.
And I want to work through these, and then, you know, I'll work my way down the list if I know what your priorities are.
So if I might add, you know, I look at these, and they're good goals, but is this what I would be ranked on? Is this what I would be, what about the rest of my work?
Oh, oh, no, I mean, you, you've seen the town administrator evaluation forms.
Yeah, are we still going to have those same?
Oh, we're going to have those, these are just a.
So these additional?
Yes, yes, just, we came up with goals for the town administrator last year as well. And yeah, these would just be additional goals for the board this year. But yeah, we're not doing, doing away with the town administrator evaluation form.
So keep.
Shucks.
I thought you would prefer to keep that.
No, I don't, I'm kidding.
So that's, so we're keeping that?
We are keeping that, yeah, this is just, this is just a.
If we can modify that at some point.
2023 goals, that's all. So, Mr. Fantasy, to Mr. Ryan's point, would you prefer that these be ranked? Or would you prefer that they just be?
I don't think so, I think it's okay to have them like that, yeah. Because they're all pretty basic and, you know, and to the point.
My, I'm just starting to think, and one of my, you know, pet peeves was the whole budget timeline process this year, and should that be?
Mr. Carter, if you can just make sure you speak into the microphone.
The, the budget process for, you know, this year, the one coming up versus last year, and that's, I think it's a pretty important thing only because of some of the issues that we have with last year's. So I kind of go back to, maybe ranking should be, should be a, something we look at for the town administrator goals.
Or just cite that that's what we, that is very important.
Or, or something.
I think at one point, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fantasy, but the select board had voted that the budget would be delivered 30 days before.
Yeah, that's the bylaw. So I don't, you know, if it's to have it 30 days before town meeting.
That's what it's always, that's what it's been.
That's the bylaw, yeah.
30 days before town meeting, yes.
One thing I can say about the budget, and it, there are a lot of, if you look at our select board goals, there were several select board goals regarding the budget. If you look at the town administrator goals, the budget comes up again. So clearly, I think the budget is a big priority for the, for the select board.
It is, and it's a big priority for me.
Both for this board and, and Mr. Fantasy. And I think, no matter whether we rank or, or don't rank, I think from the number of items here on the various goals and objectives for 2024, the, the town administrator can get the, get the impression and the message from the board that the budget is a big, a big priority for the, for the board.
Well, also, it's a whole section of the evaluation.
It is, it's, it's very weighty, so. So again, what are the, I think we should decide whether we're going to rank these or not rank them.
Sounds like we're not going to, because Mr. Fantasy said he's fine, and I think he understands the message on the budget.
Of course, it was my first budget last year, and we had some, some hiccups, you know, and.
All right, and then we'll just, why don't we go through them briefly? And again, the first two are, are mine, so I'll, yes, we'll start off that way. And we've already discussed, number one, work with the department heads to bring previously approved ARPA projects to completion. And again, the reason I have that on there is we have specific time limits that we have to get things done by, and especially in the post-COVID world where one part can stop a project dead in its tracks. I think it's really important that we work, we have, we have timelines that we, we follow to make sure that if there is a, some kind of problem in the supply chain, that we do whatever we need to do to, to get past that and get projects completed, so we don't forfeit ARPA money. And with number two, we're, we're back to the budget. Very simple, work with the finance director to better manage the budget process. And I think last year, I think we need to manage the budget process in a, in a better way and try to get ahead of things a little bit more, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. And I don't know, number three and number four, I don't know whose, those are.
I was number three, I think two and three, I think we have a duplicate for two.
Oh, okay.
I, I also, to manage the budget process a little bit better with the finance director, that's, we've already gone over that. And the thing that I wanted to review is the shared expenses with the school and the town. Because what interested me is looking back at some of those meetings when Steve Mahoney, I believe it was, said, yeah, we could probably separate those, we, we don't need to have those shared anymore. It got me thinking, how many more of these shared expenses can we maybe split up? Instead of having the town take all the, the brunt of that expense and the school not sharing in it, you know, 60, what is it, 68% of our budget goes to the school. So I think they should, I just want to double-check that, you know? I know there's some that should be broken out. I was kind of amazed when they said, yeah, we should look into that. I'm like, should we?
Certainly while we're.
Exactly, now's the time to do it.
A lot of our eyes on the budget process this year, so that's yet another part.
Yep.
Okay, four and five.
Four and five are mine. I think you're all aware that this coming fiscal year, we have to either return all the non-union employees to the 7525 and healthcare benefits, the way they were promised when they were hired, or else we're probably going to lose them. And these are some of the key people. I'm sure Mr. Fantasy can fill you in on who, who those are. I think that's important, and I think that's something that Mr. Fantasy's been working on with some of the unions, definitely. But this needs to apply to the non-union employees as well. And I believe we're talking about, just, is it okay to name an example, some examples?
No.
I didn't think so, so talk to Mr. Fantasy about who this might be.
And again, these are just goals for the year, we're not looking into the details.
So is, is part of this goal that the bylaw changed that made it for retirees to, to lose or to drop down to 50/50 in FY '25? In FY25?
It is.
So that would take an act of the legislature.
I know. Well, we have to go to town meeting first.
So town meeting and then, yeah.
Because to me, it's a cruel thing to do to hire someone knowing that your healthcare is going to be x, or you can't talk about pensions, but same here. And then, you know, here you are, 75 years old, what? Wait, what? And that's just wrong.
Okay.
Number five, again, I know Mr. Fantasy is working on returning the conservation agent position to full-time, as it should be, having been originally a part-time conservation agent here and then a full-time conservation agent. I know what it entails, and you cannot do the job at part-time. It's impossible.
So this year, we have it up to 28 hours.
Yeah, that's true.
So, and next year, my goal is to 35 hours.
That's awesome. Thank you. And I just think it's important for people to, to, I mean, there's a lot of things a conservation agent does. It's not simply issuing permits, which is all you can do at 19 hours, by the way.
Six and seven, Mr. Ryan, are those yours?
Yeah, so I think six was making sure that, you know, the agenda items that we have are thorough, accurate, in the sense that, like, a good example is just budget stuff, you know, making sure that we know the impact of budgets. Can we afford to do it? Is it in the existing budget? What's it going to cost the town? So a good example was kind of like the Kohler example that we just had, where we had to defer it because we didn't know what the impact was to the budget or how we were going to pay.
Right. And if I could just add on to that for a moment, I don't mean to interrupt you, but Mr. Fantasy, could you make a, a note? Whenever we have budget items on the agenda that may require some discussion of numbers or, could we ask Ms. Mokwan to join us?
Sure.
For that, that meeting? I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So you just finished my goal, what?
Okay.
So, so Mr. Ryan, I have a question. Whether, does that mean that we should go to Mr. Fantasy to, to get those things explained to us more accurately, or that he should bring those to us prior to a meeting?
I was thinking, kind of, it should be available for the meeting, so we maybe could have a checklist of sorts where, you know, maybe when we get to a meeting, if we say, gee, if we had had this information, it might have been better, then how do we make sure the next time it's on the agenda? Like, the poll herrings are always interesting, you know, making sure are we voting on the right polls? Are they already there, you know? Any financial things, you know, bylaw things, you know? Do we, do we know what the bylaw is and the master general law is behind it? Do we need to make sure we, we understand what it's impacting when we make a decision? So it's just, you know, making sure that things that come before the board that are going to be impacted by those kinds of decisions, we, we understand that, that that's what we're going to do.
So someone could be done if we went and talked to the town administrator?
We could. So what happens often is the package comes out on, you know, like, we get it on Thursday, Friday, whatever.
Hopefully Thursday.
You know, then I typically will email the town administrators and administrator and ask a bunch of questions, like, what's this going to? And usually, they're great. They get all this stuff together and it's ready to go. But it's that, you know, just making sure as we're making decisions that the information that comes to us is, is, you know, complete and...
And it's tough to know sometimes because we're five members, and we're probably going to have five different sets of questions. But I think the, the key thing here is when we have an agenda item and it's financial, that we have the information ahead of time. So at that Tuesday meeting, we can take a vote and make a decision and not have to defer it. Okay, let's get that information and come back in two weeks and take a vote then. The, the goal is to have as much information, get all the information that night so we can discuss it and, and take a vote that night and not have to defer it to a, to a future meeting.
And we try to do that, yeah.
Well, I mean, if we have an agenda item on a, on a particular meeting and it's financial, I, I think we need the financial information that night. So we don't have to say, hey, can you, can you go back and get us these numbers and then we can vote on it at the next meeting? We need to have that information at that meeting, hopefully in advance of the meeting. So members can read it and, and in their own mind make decisions, yeah, this is a good investment, no, it's not. And, and that may generate additional questions, who knows? But that way, and that's one of the reasons I asked to have the finance director at meetings where we have budgetary items because questions may come up. And that way you get the question answered rather than having to ask for the, the item and have to follow up at the next meeting. So I think, I think we, we share the same, same thoughts there. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's great.
I think you still have one.
In the process capture, this might fit in some overlap with things like the budget process, you know, just going through, making sure that we identify, like, you mentioned last year, there was, so there was a process in place. And you mentioned that last year there were some potential issues with the process or what, what happened. So it's, it's looking at those and just understanding, okay, what are we following for process? Why are they, why are they not working out so well? And what can we do to make corrections for, for things like that to make sure it flows much smoother and timely and, and things like that? So whatever that, as it relates to the board and the town operations, we should look at what, what we can improve.
What do you mean by town operations?
I, I wrote this so long ago, I have to think back and say, but I think it was more like the budget process and things like that. You know, any of these processes that we do in the town that, you know, make sure that they're, and are they documented? And how are they doing? And can we improve them?
So you're not talking about, like, for example, how operations and maintenance department works?
No, no.
So maybe you should change that to budget process?
Okay. Well, I guess as we define it more, we can do that. Because it wasn't just budget process, but we could probably, if we get into that goal, we can...
I don't think there's going to be any shortage of discussions on the budget process, judging from what I hear.
Well, the only reason I bring out this because we don't want to be telling the town administrator how to run daily operations.
No, it wasn't for that. It wasn't...
That's what it sounds like.
So we can reword it going forward.
And, Mr. Carter?
I was shocked. It's the detailed budget timeline. My thought process there was, you know, we had that, you know, schedule that was kind of light with like four dates. And then, hey, you have to have it done by the 30 days before town meeting. I'm thinking that we talk about looking at what happened last year, maybe coming up with more detailed segments, like, for instance, you know, just take revenue assessing, new growth. Let's just, let's just maybe take that as, versus waiting till the end and getting the whole budget to go through, which is the capital operating expenses, the revenue, everything else. Maybe we break it down into components and we say, hey, here's revenue, new growth, just analyze that. Finance committee goes throughs it, goes through it, maybe we have a meeting on it. So we understand it. And then maybe shared expenses to another point. It gets done as its own separate component. And then it follows a process where a finance committee might review it, we might talk about it, and, and we have these things behind us versus getting everything at once. And we tailor it towards deliverable dates. And I'm not saying we just do it in a vacuum. Maybe we have a subcommittee where we have somebody from assessing, someone from the finance committee, someone from the, you know, accounting department, and we sit down and work as a group, you know? I, I just know that when I was trying to encompass the budget last year, I was getting everything thrown at me at once and everything was changing. So I just think breaking it down would be better.
Well, it changes so much during the process.
No, and I, and I think we've got to know what's going to...
Moving monies and cutting budgets and...
Absolutely. That, that's the nature. It'll, it'll never be good the day you give it. You know, you do your assessing number, fine, let's put that aside. Probably going to have to get reviewed before we do the final, and it might change. You know, everything's subject to change. And then, again, making recommendations for, to reduce legal costs, something that I think that we should look at. I know we've agreed on the new rate, but maybe there's other ways that we can save, save expenses.
Okay. Mr. Fantasy, these are town administrator goals. Do you have anything in there that you would like to discuss? No? Good?
Good.
All right. Anything else from the board on that? All right. Moving right along. Minutes, licenses, topics, not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. We have the minutes of June 6, 2023. Is there a motion there?
Make a motion to approve?
These are the minutes, not the executive session minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous?
I have to abstain, I wasn't there that day.
Okay, thank you. And then we have the executive session minutes of June 6, 2023. Is there a motion on those?
Make a mo, make a motion to approve the executive session minutes not for release for June 6, 2023?
All right. Was there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you.
The same. I was, I wasn't there for that, so...
All right, thank you. All right, let's see. We have a request for one-day special licenses, all alcohol, alcoholic, from Renaissance Foods Limited, DBA, King Richard's Fair, September 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 9th, 10th, 16th, 17th, 23rd, 24th, and 30th, and October 1st, 7th, 8th, 9th, 14th, 15th, 21st, 21st, and 22nd. And, Mr. Fantasy, I believe at the last meeting, there were, there was an issue with EMS, that, that issue has been resolved?
First, first aid and CPR certification. They have two people that they're finalizing details with. Mike Ryan, Chief Ryan, said he's comfortable with approving these because they will have them in place.
Okay. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we do approve these, they can still be rescinded at any time, right? If there's an issue with public safety?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion on those licenses?
Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Let's see, we have a request for town-owned property that came in late today. I had it in front of me a minute ago, but it...
Could be right here. One, two, three.
Yeah. Thank you. So we have a request for town-owned property from Natalie Monique. The name of the organization is Destination Family to use, let's see, using, yeah, on Charlotte Park on August 5, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve for a discussion.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll suck them up.
We have a motion and a second. This came in, Mr. Fantasy, this come in today?
Yes.
And we...
And because of traveling, they're not going to be around later to have this processed. They need to know whether they set up these family members that are coming from out of state.
Yeah, I think a lot of them are coming from out of state, so...
And they do have an insurance binder.
Yep, which is in your, your packet. So...
Is there, is there precedence? Does it usually, usually do this?
Yeah, we've allowed people to use it in the, in the past.
All right.
I'm not seeing it so good. Is it, is it alcohol license or...
Uh...
It's right, it's right here. Let's see. Oh, yeah, at the top. They're not asking for alcohol.
They're not asking for alcohol, correct?
We'll have to make sure to get a permit from the fire department. Oh, because of fire...
Oh, Bobby, here we are.
Yeah, so make, make them aware of that, make them aware that there's, they don't have an alcohol license, so there's no alcohol. Okay.
So what is, what is it going to be again?
August 5.
No, no, what is it about?
The family, family function.
The family barbecue.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you.